Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Is the chairman on Zoom yet?
No.
Okay. Our chairman will be joining us via Zoom. Anything that needs a five-person vote, we'll have the fifth person via Zoom. I'll be clerking and chairing. He's convalescing from procedure. First thing on our agenda this evening... Oh, wait a minute. I've got to do roll call. Sorry. Okay. First, roll call to my right, Troy Larson, myself, Jim Akabachi. To my far left, Connor Alden, sitting around the corner there. If you... No, stay there. Get used to being there. And our principal department assistant, Sonia Repulso, down at the end. Christopher Conti at the end of the table here. Chris, Richard Semple. Sorry, Chris. You guys, you know, the twins down there. And...
Triplets.
Yeah. Well, wait a minute. I don't know. Okay, so we're called TARA. First order of business is the minutes from 2:26, 25. I saw a lot of emails going back and forth. I've seen the revised edition. All I need is a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved by Troy Larson, seconded by...
I second.
Richard Semple, all in favor, Troy?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And Nazzy online, are you there?
He's there.
He's there. Well, I'll have Connor vote on the minutes, 5:00. Did you say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. I knew you... I thought I heard you say aye. With Connor voting in the chair's place until he gets logged onto Zoom.
Yeah, that's what I did.
Okay. The first thing up in front of us is preliminary business. We're going to have a discussion. Mr. Warren, Warren Enterprises LLC, 59 Main Street. Regarding the parking issue, who's going to present? Who's going to come up?
Both of you.
Both of you. Come on up. Come on down. Let's, you know... Is Nazzy on yet? There he is. Good, good. I didn't want to get started until Nazzy was on so he could... I don't want him to miss a word. So I'm going to read the reason that you're here and you're... And we do have a Veronica. They said you were out of this world.
Almost. Not yet.
So not absent, present. Great. We just approved the minutes. We're going on to our first preliminary business. It's a discussion and a possible vote for Warren Enterprises LLC, 55 Main Street, to potentially or to consider parking at 106 Main Street to be used in the count for their occupancy permit over at Habba View Restaurant.
Habba View.
You with us yet?
Yes.
Go ahead. Do you want to... You guys want to speak? Am I doing a good job?
Doing all right so far.
Go ahead.
Do you want us... Well, I...
Bill, why don't you tell us what's up?
Okay, well, at 106 Main Street, that's the building that's occupied by Quest Diagnostics. And they have a parking lot. They have a parking lot behind the building that I believe has 10 stalls in it. And there's a parking lot to the south of it. It's a little bit of an L-shaped park shop lot. And there's like 20 parking spaces there. And I think those are the spaces that, you know, we have to retain... Some spaces need to be retained for use of the existing facility there, the Quest Diagnostics building. And Danny would like to apply some of those spaces in the 20 space stall to his facility at 59 Main Street.
Is that the dirt parking lot? I'm sorry. Is that the one that's across?
No, it's paved.
The dirt parking lot with the white shelves is owned by the hospital and leased to the town.
Okay.
Everybody in town can use it, but he can't use it in his count because everybody... Because he doesn't have control of it.
Right.
Okay, the parking rules say for it to count for his occupancy, he has to have control, either ownership or lease. Okay?
Yep.
And it's shared parking, and so crossing the Ts and dotting the Is, they're saying, nope, can't use that for you. I'm sorry to take over, but I've heard there's enough times that... Given her the condensed Reader's Digest version. So what Mr. Warren's gone out and done is he's found a neighboring property that can be used in the count. However, our bylaw says it has to be within 350 feet of his front door of the Habba View Restaurant.
Yeah.
So then they take a tape measure and they go, ah, it's more than 350 feet. So now they're here in front of us saying, if we buy or lease this property solely for the purpose of increasing our occupancy, will you guys grant us a variance from 350 feet to 700 feet so we can count it in our parking?
So...
And you can see... And you can see from the front door, you can see the parking lot.
Okay.
Or if you can't, you can see through, you know... Depends on your vision.
No, you can see it.
Okay.
So anyway, that's what we're trying to accomplish, is acquire some additional parking spaces. That's one way that Danny was looking at acquiring some. You know, we can... The way I read the bylaw under administration, you know, we can get relief from the parking space requirements by special permit. So, you know, I don't...
And which one is... I know you've got to turn to that page. What page is that?
It's page 81. It's Article 910 Administration. It's the last paragraph in that, in 910.
Okay, so it's not part of the parking. It's somewhere else. It's...
It's in parking, yes. Article nine.
Page 81. You said page 81.
I said page 81 in my book. I don't know if it's page 81.
Okay.
But if you go to Article nine, the very first page...
It's the dirt lot.
Okay. What year is your book printed in?
Well, mine's good through 20, the end of '23, but I have the latest stuff in it, so...
Okay, you've got... Anyway, Article... So number of parking spaces required here under 910 or 920?
910.
910. And number of parking spaces... And so what you're saying is in here somewhere, there's some verbiage that would allow a special permit?
Well, did they delete that out of the...
I'm reading it right now. 910. It's page 107 in the new copy. Just bear with us for a minute so that we can...
Jim, what you're looking for is that third paragraph. Relief from parking space requirements may be granted subject to a special permit by the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you. Because I was reading the first two paragraphs, word by word, one at a time. Well, you're going to read it and reread it and make sure you're interpreting it right before you speak. I'm still going to read up above just to make sure that there's nothing that contradicts. Because up here it says deviations accepted may be permitted if such deviations reduce traffic congestion or parking violations on adjacent unauthorized land and present no increased traffic hazard. That's all, you know... Any use not listed in a category shall be determined by the building inspector. Relief from parking space requirements... Relief from parking space requirements may be granted subject to a special permit by the Board of Appeals. That's pretty simple language. Does everybody see that?
I do. So I guess out of procedural, the way we do things here, is this under a petition? Did he put in an application?
This is a preliminary... This is a pre-application conversation. Anything that we... He just wants to know if he comes back and asks. He wants to... He wants to know if he should come back and ask. He's going to have to come back and advertise. He's going to want a special permit. That's going to need to be advertised. He's going to want a variance that he...
Exactly.
He may want a special permit and a variance. But just like when Wendy's was coming and they read our drive-through bylaw and three lawyers said if we were any more confused, we'd go to Wareham. They came here and they said, okay, we read your bylaw. We want to come in with an application, but we don't know what to apply for. We want a preliminary. And that's... Mr. Warren isn't confused. He's been talking to Mr. Madden.
And Nazzy has his hand up.
So Nazzy's got his hand up. So let Nazzy speak. We don't hear you because you got your microphone off.
It's unmuted. It might not be set right.
It's muted. It's still... Your lips are moving, but you want me to speak and say what I think you're saying? Oh, wait a minute. Don't you have a wife to speak for you? You've got a button on the bottom left usually on the screen of Zoom, and it's like a microphone. Somebody... Can somebody look at a Zoom screen and tell me where the mute button is?
There's a little arrow next to the mic.
And you've got permission turned on by you, right, John?
Yeah.
Okay. So what's it, a little arrow?
So if you... Yeah, there's a little arrow beside the mic.
There he goes. I think I see an arrow moving. Is that you or is it...
That's John. That's us.
It's not the microphone icon? Any luck, Naz? No? Just keep talking, but you've got to click on something to unmute yourself.
Nazzy, beside the microphone, there's going to be a little arrow. Click on the little arrow. Make sure that your computer microphone is set to the primary mic on Zoom.
Look at him all bandaged up in a sling and everything.
Yeah, what's going on with that?
He had surgery at 6:30 yesterday morning, and he left the hospital against medical advice so he could be here for you. Nazzy, you want to text into us so that we can hear your comments? Can you text? All right, send a text. One-handed, huh? A one-handed text.
Voice messages is good.
And we'll have a little more discussion, but as soon as somebody gets your text, we'll read it in. And we'll either get you to nod or give hand signals. Okay, so we're going to wait for a text from him. So we're looking at two things under the bylaw. One of them is the opening 910 administration body text provides for relief from parking space requirements via special permit. So if in fact you have a space that you want or if you want relief, you'd still have to advertise it. You'd still have to mail the neighbors and...
He's calling. I'm going to put him on speaker if that's okay.
That's even better. Do you have a microphone there that you can put it into Connor's microphone in?
I do. Chairman, I'm going to put you on speaker, okay? So you can speak into the mic? Okay.
Tell him he needs to mute his computer if he does that, otherwise I'm going to get a feedback loop.
Can you mute your computer? Do you know how to do that? Okay. Let me hold on.
Are you trying to avoid feedback?
I haven't put you on speaker yet.
Yeah, because if he's... If he's hearing us off his computer, it's going to feed through the phone and loop. And then you're just going to hear a high-pitched squeal.
Okay.
Have you muted your speaker before I put you on? Okay, it's muted. Just a moment.
It was going to be a short meeting, but we'll drag it out.
Okay.
All right, very well. So... So what we need...
Yeah, he's not muted.
All right, let me log out. Guys, try to log back in.
What'd he do?
He's logging out from...
Log off and log back in.
Okay.
If he wants to try to do it from his phone to log, go into the Zoom that way, that might work better.
Just use his phone on Zoom if he's got the Zoom app already loaded.
Yeah.
I think he can hear us.
Specifically. It looks like he's frozen on that end, so probably ended the Zoom call.
Yeah, he did.
So...
Recording in progress.
Okay.
Did he hang up, Sonia?
It looks like you're muted and everything else. Are you still on the phone?
He hung up.
Okay.
He's still connected, though.
Shows him there with his hand up. It just... He turned off his camera, not his connection. But the host should be able to shut him down. You should have godlike powers.
I can kick him from the meeting, but...
Yeah, but then you can invite him back.
Get back in that way.
Oh.
That permanently kicks him.
Thought you could turn it on and off.
If he leaves the meeting, can he get back on?
Yes.
Nazzy, can you hear that? You should just leave the meeting and call Sonia, and then after, sign back on. Anyway, in the meantime, I have a question.
Go ahead. Please do.
What's the reason for the increase in parking?
We don't have enough spaces to run the business, and this is barely going to help us if we even try to do it. We're trying to... As it is now, we've spent millions of dollars there, and it's lots of money. We can't use our decks. We can't use our yard. We can't use that pavilion building we built.
Due to the limited parking?
Because of limited parking. And my other question is...
But, excuse me, Danny.
The parking limits the number of people that can be allowed in the building. So he wants his occupancy, state of CEO, state of occupancy, to state a different number.
Jim, can you make sure the mic's facing you? When you're talking that way, I can't. It's too loud. Thank you.
So... And the other thing we don't understand, we're in the same district that my other building is in, that I'm doing with my son. He's got a 40-by-40 dining room. He can have 300 people in there to give occupancy. I've got 125-by-43 dining room, and I can only have 180 people in the building. Period. So it's full of people right now over there. And if you go over there, the parking lot's packed. There's no place to put a car anywhere. You know, half the tables are empty. When we lost the deal we had with Toby Hospital to the town for that lot that was promised for five years, they made us take 110 seats out of the restaurant. At 110 seats out of the restaurant, it's impossible to make any money at all. Since the day I opened it to date, I've put $147,000, my own money, into paying the bills there, and it's packed. So it's to the point, we've got to figure out some way that we can get some credit for the people that live next door at British Landings that are in there all the time. They walk right through the yard and right in. Tony Zekko was in the other day and said, when spring comes, you're going to make a killing here. He said, everybody's excited as hell to be out on the decks and having a good time. And he said, there's a couple hundred people there every night during the summer. Can't do it. So we're to the point, if we can't figure out a way to get this changed, we are going to close that building down.
Yeah, so I'm curious. It's the same zoning as...
Same zoning.
So that's interesting.
I've talked to judges, lawyers, everybody in that restaurant, and I've started telling people that we're not going to have a summer. They keep saying, when summer comes, you're going to have it made. We have no summer. It makes no difference whether it's summer or winter. This imaginary thing that people aren't walking by the front of it, by the dozens, to go wait in line someplace else for hours. They all felt that this would bring relief to that, and so did I. And if I'd had any clue from this town that that's the way it was, I would have not spent $8 million here. And there's no bank. That was my money. So we're not blowing smoke or anything. It's just business. If we can't get something, we're going to have to shut it down. And the only grace from God is there's no bank. So the fence will go back up. The weeds will grow. I'll put a big white sign up saying, sorry, Wareham, I tried. And that's because it makes no sense to anybody you talk to.
Frustrating.
Okay, I understand. So he just wants to get his CEO... Because if you own a restaurant and the number on the wall says 180 and somebody calls up and says, I want to book a party for 350 people, you have to say, no.
You know what we did?
What will your occupancy be with this...
500.
500.
Yeah, we had it checked by Rob DeRoche. It's actually 550.
What would you like? Is that the... Is that...
I would like on special occasions, like last Saturday, before last Saturday, I sacrificed the building for a family, not getting into no names. They had a tragedy, and they had a funeral so big, no church in this area could hold it or handle it. So they got... They had the funeral at Tabor's Parade Grounds. And then in waves, 700 people came through my building to see the family. And we shut down for that for eight hours. But the point is, there's lots of opportunities there we had that we've lost, and I couldn't... It's like every time you get over one stumbling block, there's another one. I mean, I'm just going to say it. It's not due this form. I had a deal with National Grid to bring 250 people 11 times a year to sleep over in Wareham, from P-Town to Boston to the state borders. It got shot down because of a ridiculous reason. And they were going to come from October to June. Every time they come, they were going to give me $50,000. The very day they were going to sign the contract, it got stopped by the town of Wareham. And it's just madness. And to just say it... And I don't have the name off the tip of my tongue, but there was big, big, big investors came to look at Wareham. And they looked at the property that I bought, and they looked at a bunch of other property. And they determined that the town wasn't ready for a big investment. So they're spending $400 million in Plymouth. They were in my place Saturday night and said, holy smokes, did you do something here incredible? They said, you took this on, knowing it was polluted, and it was it. I said, yeah, I did. I grew up here, and I decided this is where I want to spend my money. So now we are in this situation that it's like nobody's going to walk in from next door. Nobody's going to walk in from down the hill. There's more walk-ins than there are people driving in, to be honest about it.
So I actually have a question. I don't know if anybody knows the answer to this, but do we have permits from the town for special occasions that people can apply for? Like when you have a parade, you go and get permits?
Yeah, they told me to call. And they said, call in. And I didn't get a permit. They said, just notify us. We didn't open the bar at the family's request. And we just sprung them in waves. And that's all we could do. And it was waves.
Well, it sounds really frustrating. I hope you stick with trying to get it to work, because I think it will.
It's very frustrating. And here's the sad thing about it. We've got high school kids in their bus and tables making 800, 900 bucks a week, and they're going to lose those jobs. And they all know it. They see it.
So that's why we're having this preliminary... What Mr. Warren wants to know is if indeed they decide to come back in front of us and use the proximity rule, which is 952 in our zoning bylaws, then he'd ask for us to grant a variance from 350 feet to 700 feet distance.
A variance?
I'm asking for more. I want to be treated like everybody else in that district.
No, no, we're talking simply about the use of off-site parking, proximity parking. And then if he comes in front of us and asks for more under a special permit, you could come to us... If I'm reading this right, you could come to us and say, after you've advertised to the public, I want permission to use these spaces at this address and they're X amount of feet from the house.
There's nowhere near enough spaces there to solve the problem.
Okay. Then you could come in front of us and say, I'd like relief from the parking space requirements granted via a special permit by the Board of Appeals. That would be us. So what you're here for tonight is to ask us, get a sense of how we're going to act if you come and ask that question.
And the other question, just because we're here, and maybe I can't ask it here, where would I go or which board to find out why I can't be treated the same as everybody else that's in the same district that I'm in?
I think you're in the right board. It's just that we don't know... We don't quite understand how downtown is... We don't understand how downtown is calculated under a different yardstick than your place. That... We don't understand that, so we have the same question as you.
None of us understand it. And if, believe me, nobody would have done what I did there if they knew that snake was laying in the grass. And I put up with all the other madness, but this is the camel that's breaking the... This is the straw that's going to break the back.
Before we... I want to... Just because you said you couldn't find it. It's 952, as far as 350 feet goes. Oh, okay. I don't... Yeah, I didn't... Section 952. Yes, I knew it was in there. I didn't know what section. Okay. Just if you come back... If you or your attorney or Mr. Madden comes back, I just want you to know what you're coming back for. That's all. This is a preliminary discussion so that when you do come back... Say it again?
It's logging in in just a minute.
Nazzy needs... Nazzy's ready to talk?
In just a minute.
In just a minute.
So how many spaces are they asking for at 106?
Well, I thought there was more spaces there than that. I counted much more spaces, but the guy was... The guy that owns the property, the time I would be using it, they're not there. And if the building's not for sale... The building beside it was for sale, and I had it bought for a million two. And I went back to close the deal at the million two, and it went to a million five. And we're back to close the deal at a million five, and it went to a million seven. And I was like, forget it.
So we don't know how many spaces at 106 that you're going to... You're asking for?
At 106, we know how many spaces exist. We just don't know how many of them will be allowed to be used as part of the count because there's other tenants in that location, and the bylaw has language that says, you know, you can't both count the same space if you're both open at the same time.
True. But I was just curious how many, if they had an exact amount from 106.
I know that there's 30 spaces there total.
And it says here, at 952, if he's using it for his employee parking, he doesn't need a variance on that.
Right.
Correct.
So would you park... Would you have your employees park over there?
No, my employees are parking on the seashell parking lot. But...
All right. Would you offer maybe a valet service and have the cars parked over there?
I already tried that. They want $2,000 to $3,000 a night.
Chris.
It's a real circus. It's a real circus.
They don't have, they don't need the parking, they need the parking to count. They have, just so everybody's clear, and if I'm wrong, you tell me I'm saying it wrong. They have adequate parking.
You do understand it.
They have adequate, nobody knows it better than me because I've been, you know, well, and you. And now poor Mr. Madden gets sucked into the, you know, you get on the, get on the edge of that whirlpool and next thing you know.
So if they, if they have adequate parking?
They have adequate parking because there's, that seashell area that everybody keeps talking about, that white parking lot? There's enough spaces there, even if VeriLife and Quest all have their customers parked there at the same time, there's still enough spaces. If all of that could, or half of it, or three quarters of it counted towards his occupancy...
Put 200 cars in there last Saturday.
He's not trying to get, he's not, he's creating more places because he needs to increase the permit on the wall. There's only one person in the world can change the number on the permit and, on the wall, and that's the building commissioner.
And that ain't never gonna happen.
And, and he's not here today.
Well, I might as well go home now.
Basically because he knew we were gonna discuss this and he doesn't, you know, didn't wanna get in a battle. So...
Is this what he refuses to talk from?
He can, he can, he can come to us and ask, now they're appealing, where, he's, he can come and appeal our decision and he's finding, he's coming here and saying, what am I appealing? Am I looking for a special permit? Am I looking for a variance on the distance from my building? Just tell me what you want, you know, tell me what you guys are willing to do and I'll come back under a, a pre-advertised application and we'll take a vote on it. Go ahead.
Okay, I, I just have a couple of things. We've talked about the occupancy of 500. If we relate to the zoning district that we're in, we're in the Wareham Village 1.
Yep.
1R. Okay, so that's a new zoning district that was...
For redevelopment.
For redevelopment. So that's the zoning district we're in. The table for parking for a restaurant with seating is one per six spaces. So if we take our 500, the occupancy that we're shooting for, we divide it by the six, that gives us the total number of parking spaces that are needed, and that's 83. So what I'm...
83, including the 40 something that he already has on site?
83 total.
Total. And how many do you have on site?
There's 46 on site and some are attributable to the marina and some are attributable to the restaurant.
Does that include employees?
Yes.
It does include employees?
So you need, you need 38 or something like that spaces. Am I saying it right? Doing the math, 37, 38, 30. Carry the one.
34.
The square root of 14 is 12.
It's like, it's like 49 spaces are needed.
49 more, 49, not 39.
Right. Well, I mean...
37.
37.
Okay.
37. I was using my toes and I put my shoes back on, but if you've got 40 something already and you need 80 something, half of 80 is 40 something.
I was subtracting out the 12 for the marina.
Oh, you were taking out 12 for the marina?
Right.
Okay, cuz you gotta, you gotta take 12 out for the marina, so that's, what's your final number?
I had 39, 49 is what I was dealing with.
It's a, it's almost moot because I'm glad you pointed out paragraph three of page one of Article 9 Parking. And I'm gonna read it again and if somebody, if somebody, I know Nazzy's ready to speak, but it says, "Relief from parking space requirements may be granted, subject to a special permit by the Board of Appeals." Ta-da.
Well, hear me out on why I'm thinking there's some clear rationale, why that number can be reduced. I don't know what the, the sentiment of the board is, but, you know, I did a little bit of research today as to what happens in other lake-type communities and lake-type areas. And for example, what kind of credit to parking can be given from the existing on-street parking that runs across the frontage of his property? I mean, granted, we realize he can't park directly in front of his property, but across the street, where those spaces were occupied by the tenants, there could be credit given to that 49 for the on-street parking that exists out there. Additionally, there can be credit given for a walkable place. I mean, it's a walkable distance from a lot of, from a lot of locations within the town of Wareham and credit could be given to whatever degree the board seems appropriate for a, a walking, walking distance. So that, that number can be diminished in some degree by a couple of, I mean, reasonable and logical things that could get placed.
And now let me ask you a question. You and I were having a casual conversation about something totally different from the one we're having right now. And you had walked Merchant's Way and counted how many empty spaces on a Saturday afternoon.
I went down there last Saturday afternoon at 2:00 and there had to be, I don't know, I'll exagger, I don't know if I'm exaggerating, but there looked to be around 200 spaces available to me at Merchant's Way. I didn't bother to go to Pezzoli Square. I didn't look at the other parking lot that's a town-owned lot, or that will be the town-owned lot. But case in point, that could be considered part of that walkable distance with 80 some odd spaces there. I mean, they would be able to use them, they can't be designated solely for his use, but the zoning board could consider them as a walkable, a walkable space from that, from that restaurant. So I think when we start to look at what the, what a village district promotes, you know, there's some, there's some opportunity to cut down that, cut down the pure requirement of a specific number of spaces. And it seems to me there's, there is quite a few in that, in that neighborhood, you know?
I'm, I'm, I'm kinda letting the conversation kinda wax on because I wanna let our chair, who's trying to communicate via phone or via text or via Zoom or something.
I, I have another question, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Chris.
The marina, right, how many, did we count for any parking spaces in the marina?
12.
12? And that's included in the 183? I mean, the 83?
It's included, um, no, that's for the restaurant.
That's for the restaurant?
Right. So what I did is I, I took the 12 from the 46 that are there and said there's, whatever the number was...
34.
34 that was available for the restaurant. And that 34, at the time when we, when we applied and received our permits for the project, it was one per five in that zoning district. So the 34 times the five gives us 162, something along those lines, which was greater than the 150 we were seeking at the time. So we, we had the appropriate number of parking. Then when the, the venue issue came to light, as far as function halls and things like that, that's what precipitated the need for, for other seats and, and more, in more seating. And, you know, you'll, we see that happen quite a bit, right? With respect to having some type of, I don't know, functions in, in most of the restaurants downtown. Most of the restaurants downtown and in other places in town do have ability to provide functions for people upwards of 100, 100 people or so, maybe more. You know, we go to other places at certain times that, that are designed for a couple hundred people and there might be 300 or 400 people in, in the building. So it's got nothing to do with what we're talking about here, but it kinda brings us around to that 49 number and what, what can, what can we do as far as consideration for the, the walkable distance in the community? You know, some, some communities also give credit for places that are in the historic districts in certain places. Historic districts don't typically like to see a tremendous amount of on-street parking. You know, they like to see some off-street parking.
They loved it when they were selling dope. You couldn't get in that damn street when they were selling dope, and that's what burns me.
So...
So I got a question for Mr. Warren. So can you explain to me, even though I know, explain to me why the business across from Cumberland Farms can have that many people in their parking lot that's so small?
They're in the same district I'm in, and that's, that's the problem. And I don't understand how that can be. And he's got the approval.
How, how, how does?
Because he can use all, he can use all the parking in town.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at. Now, I remember that the town got their little thing from the state to revitalize the center of town and they took away a lot of parking spots with the bump outs and everything, which I still find one of the worst mistakes that this town's ever made. The clocks are never right.
Exactly.
The parking is ridiculous to get in, they got three spots. The only spot you can get into is the first, the middle one. Everybody else has to fight for it. There's a Mexican restaurant, I don't know if they've got any parking, but they can fill their place. The Italian restaurant, the Rose, they never had any parking, they use public parking. So I don't think that this situation renders much more discussion for me that I'm in favor of him getting.
So you'd be in favor of granting a special permit?
I am in favor of granting, yes, I'm, I would be in favor of granting a special permit.
Just, uh, like, cuz I believe that's why they're here, so that they can have a feeling of how the board feels. Mr. Marky, how do you feel about it?
I've been to the restaurant, I think it's a fabulous restaurant, it looks great. The food was wonderful. I hate to see it disappear in Wareham. And I would probably give a special permit.
You'd probably grant a special, and, and, and...
I'm, I'm for it.
I'm doing a straw vote and, so somebody's gonna say no. Veronica, come on, we're counting on you, you get the no seat. Would you be for it too?
Yeah, I am, I mean, I, I don't, this is obviously not a formal vote. But I, I feel like too, like we are spending a lot of time talking on this, I think you should just apply and come before us, cuz...
He, he, yeah, but we spent a lot of time talking to, so Nazzy could talk.
I think it's important for the public to hear as well. Nobody knows that you're here.
Again, we're waiting for the commissioner's view, that's the only reason why we're mammbling, all right?
Is he, is he ready?
Commissioner of the chairman.
Excuse me.
Commissioner, we already know the commissioner's view.
Taking events three weeks, two weeks ago, and people were asking us why, we shut that link right down. And I started telling people and they're like, you have got to be kidding me. I said, no, I'm not kidding you. On the terms of tables, you got an expert right there, you should turn that table on the brunch Sunday. If I had that other 110 seats that are down in the basement. And people are saying things like, he can build a place like this, but he can't buy enough furniture for the dining room. It's downstairs.
Is, I'm sorry, is the chairman ready?
He's ready to talk, he's just waiting for, no. You're still trying to get him in?
Veronica, I mean, excuse me, I'm losing it now. Can he just call you and just, you put him on speakerphone? What, what's the, call, call him and put him on speakerphone and just let him say it? He doesn't need...
If we would've had those seats Sunday.
He doesn't, he doesn't need to listen, he doesn't need to listen to anything else, we just want his comment.
I'm just gonna put you on, I'm just gonna put you on speaker. Okay?
He just can't be having a meeting up at the same time, cuz that's why we...
Just shut his computer off and talk on the phone, please.
You wanna do what?
Connor, any thoughts?
Uh, yeah, just to confirm, if you were to come back before the board, you would be seeking a special permit under 910, correct? So we're not looking at 9, we wouldn't be looking at 952 in the future.
We, we, he has that option.
I, I don't know about that. Cause 950, 910, according to how I'm reading it, is for spaces. 952 is for distance. So you might be looking at both. That's just from what I'm, I, but I don't know.
If you got the spaces, who cares about the distance?
Well, the distance is in the bylaw.
This doesn't say we're granting him, we're counting, we're just, we're granting him relief.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, right. Go ahead.
I just want, you know, I mean, I, when I was taking my ride downtown and checking out the parking on the Saturday, there's, there's six food service establishments right down in the, right on Main Street. None of them have their own individualized parking. And under this bylaw, to me, it would be required. None of them have any of it. There's two restaurants that recently closed. Okay, so we got the Scarlet Rose that, that closed and what was the other one that was...
Mama Mary's?
Pardon me?
Mama Mary's.
Yeah, so we have two that closed and we have two more that are opening up, or...
Did that open?
Hopefully. One is open and one is, you know...
To be opened.
To be opened. So, you know, we see how all those places, you see the Merchant's Way Cafe, right? On a Saturday or Sunday morning? How many people are on the sidewalk waiting to go into that place? Where do they park? You know, they're queued up waiting to win. They're very successful business. El Mariachi, same way. You know, the, the restaurant business is, is going very well in town and, you know, just, I think it, it just shows the, the walkable nature and the, and the need to consider the walkable nature of the, of the village district and perhaps even provide some, you know, relief on parking requirements as a result of the walking nature of the village.
That would be all the justifications we'd use in granting a special permit. That would be, go ahead. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Nazzy get his, get his, um, go, Nazzy, go.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Your turn.
I, I sorry for the bad communication. I, I agree with Veronica, it should be a public hearing. They need a special permit, Mr. Warren, a new special permit and a variance, if that makes a sense. A variance because more than 350 feet. And some sort of control of the property, like lease or something. Thank you.
Okay. That was worth waiting for. I'm a wise guy, Nazzy, I hope you're listening.
So you get that?
Yes, you're still on speaker.
We got it.
All right, I'm gonna try, I got somebody here to help me with it, maybe I could do it. Okay, bye.
When you come back, I'm fired, is that what you said?
He's gonna, I guess someone's there, they're gonna help him log in.
Oh, they're gonna help him log in, so he'll be back on for...
For a town and federal credit union and anything else.
Okay, you guys are lucky. So we're done with you. I'm, the way... Did you get a sense of where you are?
Yes, I do.
Did you get what you came here for? I mean, did you get?
Yes, I did.
We didn't promise you anything, we just...
We didn't promise anything.
Go ahead, Phil. Phil's gonna come up and be recognized and, and throw a monkey wrench in our, our conversations.
Just, I, I, Phil Cudero, Allen &amp; Major Associates, I appreciate where the conversation is going. I just wanted to make one quick comment for the board.
Sure.
You are looking at this from the zoning perspective for number of parking spaces. It is clear that if you issue a special permit, you can change the either requirement of spaces, the distance, whatever you choose. What I'm hearing though is Mr. Warren would like larger occupancy in the building, which the building commissioner needs to render an opinion on based on the amount of people that can be in the building, irrelevant to the parking spaces.
Yeah, that's, that's already been determined. The fire department and everybody all agree that he's got enough square feet for the occupants. It's 14 square feet per person for dining area.
Right. I just wanted to make sure it got on record that both of those had to be satisfied.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that additional information on the record. The size of this facility can handle the number of people. He's restricted because our bylaw says, you base the occupancy on the number of parking spaces and it's, it's five or six times the number of parking spaces is what goes up on the wall. Even though there's a parking lot that can more than suffice, it can't be counted for the number on the wall because he doesn't control it. He doesn't own it. And, and so, so I, based on, if everybody, if anybody disagrees with me, it appears that there's a consensus that there's sufficient parking in the area, there's just a flaw in our bylaw that's causing the number on the wall to handicap this man's operation and he's here, look, he's gonna be coming back looking for relief. All we wanted to know is if he came back looking for relief, were we gonna work with him or were we gonna give him a middle finger? Maybe that's not the way to put it, but that's the way I put it. People know what I mean.
Since they took the 110 seats out, if we would've had them Sunday, our, our income would've been 18,000 more than it was.
Okay.
It's the profit was taken out of the building. And it's just the way it is.
So, do you have anything more to add? Thank you, Phil, thank you for your input, that was some good input. You know, I expected to be home by now.
Yeah, I don't have anything more to add, we can add the rest at, at our hearing on the special permit.
The bottom line is, you gotta come back under a pre-advertised, decide if you're asking for a special permit, if you're asking for a variance, if you're asking for both. And then we can, then we can have this argument, this conversation all over again.
With the public here.
With, with anybody that, anybody from the public will be allowed to be here.
Believe me, you need a bigger boat, it's already got 1,000 signatures.
Okay. We don't need to vote or anything, just get out of here. You've been, you've wasted enough of our time. Is that polite enough? They told me I need to be more polite. It's time for you to leave.
I get to stay.
Okay. Thank you for coming in. Thank you, Mr. Madden, for your input. Danny, feel free to stay and listen to us humiliate everybody else in town.
I'm working now.
Okay.
Oh, there he is.
Nazzy's back.
I switched computers, so that's good.
That's back.
Still can't hear him though, right?
There was a hungry dog on the meat wagon, Nazzy, but we talked him down.
Good.
Okay, that's done. Next thing, discussion, JF Engineering, I wondered why you were keeping that seat warm. Is gonna come in front of us under preliminary business for talking about a variance for Six Recovery Road. Would you like to, um, would you like to start all over again and tell us what you're up to this time?
Sure, I'm Bill Madden from JF Engineering and I'm here on behalf of Conserve Group Inc. and Asec, A Bio Real here, but to, for my ceiling business, Acoustech Ceilings. So, we submitted a, a building permit application to the building commissioner for denial.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Going back some time ago, he, he replied back to us indicating that we needed a, um, a variance for, um, storage that we were proposing in a portion of the building that we'd like to build at Six Recovery Road. I don't know if we were before you, when we were doing coastal orthodontics a couple of years ago, but it's that same site that's directly across the street from the Orthopedic, South Coast Orthopedic Office on, on Recovery Road. And what the proposal was for, I think we were looking at about a 7,400 square foot building with 3,000 square feet of office area and this 4,400 square feet of storage facility to run with the ceiling tile office building. So, in that industrial zoning district, you can't exceed more than 40% of the building, gross floor area, storage without, um, without requiring, without requesting a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, we recognize that we've asked for this in many instances in the past. Paul's letter outlines that, you know, storage is not allowed and a variance is required. The applicant was just, you know, we were also subject to site plan review and the applicant was just a little hesitant to pull the trigger on authorizing us to prepare the site plan review until he had a sense of where we're gonna stand with the, with the variance. So that's why we came before you tonight is just to get a general sense based on past experience.
You wanna know where you stand?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna get a sharp stick, we're gonna make a point on it, we're gonna put you in a cage. We're gonna torture you for four, five, or six meetings and then you're gonna go away happy or mad. But, um, I get it. And to the board and to anybody listening online, uh, in the room. The position that Wareham takes is that if it's not listed as an allowed use, it's automatically not allowed. That's why you're here. Because our list of things you can do in Wareham doesn't include, in the industrial park, a warehouse. Now, for my two cents' worth, if there's a better place to put a warehouse than in an industrial park, I'd like somebody to tell me where it is. However, the way our bylaw is interpreted, and our commissioner has to treat everybody the same. It's not listed as allowed, so he has to deny you, say not allowed. We get you 750 bucks, we get you in here. You'd have to go for a site plan review anyway.
Understood.
So, all that said, you're gonna be coming back in front of us. You're really not getting a bogus fee to come and ask for a warehouse because you gotta do site planning. And you could roll it all into one application. You want a use variance and you want site plan review.
Correct.
And site plan review, Mr. Cudero, who just got up, is gonna look at your plans. Bill Madden's gonna share them with him. He's gonna say, okay, I need X number of hours at X rate to pick this apart and find something wrong with it. And, um, make you change this and make you change that. And then you're gonna change it and you're gonna come back and we're gonna say, okay. And then you're done.
Enough.
Is that a good enough, is there any questions from the board?
Nope.
Any questions from the board? Nazzy's got his hand up.
Yeah, I get the mic, I might as well speak, yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I think what he wants also, I, I believe, our bylaws call for 40% of storage in a warehouse and 60 for office. I believe he wants a variance on the, on the volume of storage. Probably 80%, correct me if I'm wrong. Or 90, I don't know how much storage he wants to use because our bylaw allows only 40% of the building.
That's what's over the top, is, is, is the ratio, the 40?
You guys are over the top, all right. Okay. Does anybody see as though this guy's gonna have a problem running a business that installs suspended ceilings in the industrial park?
No, but I have a question about, didn't we have a general contractor come in here not that long ago asking about storage in the industrial park and we told him no?
No.
Do you remember who that was?
Toe Road, that is industrial. We didn't tell.
He had vehicles, right?
And? No.
No, what did he have?
He had, he worked on schools, he had a construction company and he.
He had a construction company and he worked on schools and whatnot, contracts.
Right.
We didn't deny him.
He stumbled into something that he didn't realize that he was not gonna be able to use.
He failed to ask to do what he was doing.
He not come back or something?
So he had gotten a cease and desist.
He's coming back, his, his application's in front of me right now.
He had, he'd been, he'd been.
Okay, good to know, I'm just, I'm asking because this is the same type of thing.
He gotta, he gotta know because he never asks for may I. So he gotta see, he gotta notice a violation.
Right, okay.
That's okay. He was here for that, we explained it to him. And we got our sharp sticks out, we put him in the cage and we poked him. And he's still coming back and it's been years.
I just think that he missed, he missed, he missed like three meetings, we were calling for him. He was supposed to be back, he just never came back and finalized anything.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
I think that's what the problem is.
You know, we do this every two weeks. We get it. We can actually tell you some bylaws by number and page, you know? You do it once in your lifetime or maybe twice if you're lucky, you know? Or if you're like our chairman, you've done it about 100 times from that side of the room and you get to really know what you're doing, but you, you know, so we understand the reason for the preliminary meeting. You wanted to just know, again, just like we told Mr. Warren, we can talk about it all night, but you have to advertise it, you have to come back. You have to let all the neighbors know that they can come in and root you on or challenge you or whatever. And then we make our decision regardless of what they said.
Very good.
I do have another question, reading this.
Yep.
So, the office space would require 12 parking spots. Are you trying to avoid a site plan review by doing the storage and having only five spaces? Or what's, what's that?
We weren't, Paul says we require site plan review, we're not trying to avoid site plan review, you know it's required.
Okay, cause I'm just reading that here that is 12 if it's an office. And then it said, well, there's only five required if it's storage. So I just wanna know, like, what?
It's gonna be?
The site plan review regardless.
Yes, yeah, he's, because he needs X amount of storage spaces, X amount of office spaces. The office spaces are one per 250 and the storage, he said, I think he wanted five spaces for the 4,400 square feet of storage. So we were over the 10 for the project. So that would require site plan review and we're in agreement with that, we have no issue.
Thank you.
I'm not challenging that at all, do you?
No.
Yeah. All right, I was nice to Mr. Warren, so I'll be nice to you too. Do you have any more questions?
I do not.
Get out.
Thank you. Everybody go home. Thank you so much, everybody.
You can stay, you really don't have to leave.
Very interesting, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you, yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you, gentlemen, it's a nice project, I think it'll be a good addition to the park.
Thanks, it'd be like my home there.
I saw the plan, you know?
Thanks, thanks, everybody.
Okay, so you've had, you must've been looking at the agenda. I don't even have to say it, come on down, you know. 6624 Taunton Federal Credit Union. Special permit for site plan review and drive-through use, 2512 Cranberry Highway. Gentlemen, it's your, the microphone's yours.
Good evening, Sean Leach for Northeast Engineers and Consultants, representing Taunton Federal Credit Union. We were in here in January for preliminary initial, and we were, we're here for a special permit as required under the bylaws for a drive-through. We've gone through site plan review, we have everything in place. And I believe a verbal was issued by the fire department for clearance on the site plan. So we're here tonight just looking for that special permit.
I'm sorry?
Is it verbal or did we actually get to?
It was posted in opengub.com.
Okay.
Okay, so, we actually have a digital copy of it.
Yeah, it was posted this morning.
You didn't know, but I did.
Okay.
I believe.
So, it, I don't know if you want me to go through a presentation, but this is the site, 2512 Cranberry Highway, across from the police station. It's basically a simple bank building with parking, adequate parking and with a drainage infiltration in the back and basically a drive-through on the right side of the building where there's an entrance and an exit to go out of the drive-through.
I've, I've been following the site plan, I've been following the review by Mr. Cudero. At this point, I believe, every, you know, you guys have worked closely with our peer reviewer. He, he, you drew what you drew, he said, hmm, maybe, and he said, oh, okay, and you did it and you changed it. And so now we got a final plan that our town engineer consultant can give us a thumbs up on. So my question now is to the board, does anybody on the board have any questions on this use or this site? Or the way that the parking lot or the lights or the drainage or what color the shingles are on the roof? No questions?
No questions.
No, I looked at it, I thought it looked good.
Yeah, anybody from the public that has any comments in favor or against this? We'll take yez or nays. Naz, you?
I'm good, I'm good.
Let's not waste a lot of their time, they've done a good job, they've put a good plan forward, they've worked well with our engineer. I need a motion to close the public portion of this application.
Do we need any comments from Phil or are you all good?
We already got it, we got hand signals.
Yeah, I must've missed it, sorry.
Okay, no problem. So I need a motion to close the public portion.
So moved.
Was that Richard?
Yes.
Okay, so it's been moved by Richard that we close the public portion, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Conti, all in favor. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
I'm, I'm not voting on this, I'm Chris's.
You, okay, myself, aye. Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm looking up at Nazzy and Nazzy?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, you're closed. You know, we haven't voted on you yet, we just, we just told everybody they have to shut up. Now we get to vote. I need a motion to approve the plans, the site plan as presented, and I don't have it in front of me. Can you read me the date and, you know, say the engineer's name and the date for me?
Okay, uh.
Last revision.
Last revision date is of March, March 4th, 4th of 2025, in response to comments. Uh, the original date is July 24th, 2024, uh, by Northeast Engineers for Taunton Federal Credit Union, Sessas Platt 109A, Lot 1032, 2512 Cranberry Highway, Wareham.
Thank you, I hopefully, so we have a motion, some, who made the motion to approve? Anybody yet?
Not yet.
Okay, so we're waiting, we're hoping for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Richard Simple, seconded by Troy Larson, all in favor, Mr. Larson?
Aye.
You're not voting. Myself, aye. Mr. Simple?
Aye.
Mr. Conti?
Aye.
Mr. Al Colasi?
Aye.
Aye. Now, get out.
No, wait, 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 we need one more motion for a use, drive-through use.
No, it was all, wasn't that part of the site plan?
Yes, the special permit, the special permit was the relief we were looking for.
But let's, let's cross the Ts and dot the Is, make a motion to approve this drive-through. If you approve of it.
I, I would make a motion to approve the, um, use of a drive-through.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Conti, seconded by Simple, all in favor. You giving me a hand signal, wait a minute, before we vote?
Can I, I'm sorry to interrupt again.
That's all right.
Again, Phil Cudero, Allen and Major Associates, before you conclude your final vote, I just wanted to see if the board had adopted, to Mr. Farady's language that he suggested at the last meeting for occupancy permit process, which requires the as-built and the inspections to take place, just in the event that that's?
I'll, thank you, I'll, I'll make sure I remind them, yes, it's been adopted.
Okay.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
You're not voting, aye, my, I'm sorry, Mr. Larson, aye, Akabachi, aye. Simple?
Aye.
Conti?
Aye.
Al Colasi?
Yes, I, I may add that Chris is right, it's a special permit for the drive-through and site plan review, so it's two votes, so I'm aye for possible.
We did it under two votes. We did one vote for the special permit for the, uh, site plan and one for, we did a site plan vote and we did a drive-through vote. Now you're all set, I can tell you to get out, but before you leave, what Mr. Cudero was bringing up, we've had problems in the past, our bylaw calls for as you go, as you build it. You gotta, you're, you're supposed to be either calling him or the commissioner or somebody and saying, we've gone this far, come look at it. Just like a building inspector would inspect you as you go because this has been granted under this, these permits and variances. Our, um, our town engineer should, along the way, there's times, come down and, and do a site review to make sure you're following what we approved.
Uh, I, I fully expect that, especially along the way for building permits.
Yeah, well, we had.
And at the end, Naz, I'm sure Naz's built plans required and certifications that is building conformance for the plan.
We had a significant building built in town and the building, the thing went from preliminary site work to looking for an occupancy and the town engineer had never been back to the site once and, um, you know. So we're, now we're making a big deal of making sure everybody knows that, um, it's expected and you knew it.
It's very typical, yes, so.
So now I'll tell you to get out.
Okay.
Thank you very much, thank, good job, good job, thank you, nice work with you, gentlemen. And we'll be happy to have Taunton in our town, Taunton Federal Credit Union. So, they can't go there and get clipped by Mr. Chris anymore, they have to go to the credit union to get, catch him out. No clipping, no, okay, thank you, guys. So that one's done.
He's in the center of town now.
Huh?
I said, he's over in the center of town.
Oh, is he?
Chris is, yeah, he's down at, down at the corner, down by Bessin Park, yeah. In the, I, I call it the old tea room, but everybody says, tea room, when the hell was it a tea room?
I said, in the 50s and 60s. So, I can go back to the 60s, but the 50s I can't. I can tell you about then.
So, anyway, um, continued public, public hearing, 3-25, Elaine Renzi, variance or special permit, 70 Main Street, Main Avenue.
Let's not continue, that's new, right?
That's new, public hearing.
That is?
That's a brand, brand new one. Gotta read it in.
Before you, huh?
Those are folders, am I grabbing a folder?
You can grab your folder, you can look and see there's nothing in it.
I usually write notes in it.
Oh, okay, go ahead, you wouldn't welcome, you can't, I have to read it first and then I'll, then I'll be fresh.
All right, sounds good.
Uh, the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on March 12th, 2025 at 6:30 PM in Room 520 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 3-25 for a variance or a special permit from the requirements of Article 6, Section 628, and Article 13, Section 1351 and 1352 of the Wareham zoning bylaws. To Elaine Renzi, Karen Benjamin Fippen of 163 Center Street, Carver, Mass., proposing to build a four-foot by 16-foot addition at the rear of the building to accommodate interior staircase renovation and also to include changing rear door location and building a nine-foot by nine-foot deck located at 70 Main Avenue, Wareham, Mass. This would appear on Wareham Sessas Map 11, Lot 247A, in the R30 zoning district. Now it's your turn.
All right.
Make sure you say your name and?
My name's Ben Fippen, I'm here on behalf of Elaine Renzi, seeking approval to build a four-by-16 addition, nine-by-nine deck and change the location of the rear entry door. Purpose of the addition is to accommodate a new co-compliant staircase. Our current staircase is very steep, very narrow, not very safe. Only way to achieve a co-compliant staircase is to move an exterior wall to make the staircase longer and achieve the correct tread and rises that we need.
So in order to make our staircase conform, you have to rip the old one out, is that it?
Rip the old one out and extend the rear wall of the house, that's the four-by-16 addition.
So you were denied because?
Uh, setbacks, setbacks and?
Side and rear setback.
And, uh, floor plan ratio, floor area ratio.
And FAR. Okay.
If I may interrupt?
Go ahead.
The chairman had to log out because he's uncomfortable and he's asking if somebody else can vote on his behalf.
It's a new one, so Veronica, one, two, three, four, five, we've got five.
Okay.
Veronica, you're still off the hook. Thank you for coming on, Mr. Chairman, he's gone? Okay, I mean, that was pretty good, he, he, he was 6:30 yesterday morning, he was under the knife. So, um, anyway, so we're looking at FAR and side and rear setback. Side and rear setback is required 10 feet. Floor area ratio is required 30%. Without rereading it here, what are you, what are you gonna end up with?
Uh, floor area ratio is 33.46% now, it will be 35.6. Um, and setbacks, I believe the rear setbacks are good.
So what, what'd you say it is now?
Um, now it is 33.46. So it's already over the required.
Okay, and it will be?
It will be 35.6.
Okay, and the setback?
Uh, so the rear setbacks are good, we're within the 10 feet. It's the side setback on the deck. Existing setback now is 6.6 feet. With the proposed, will be down to 3.6 feet.
Three-point what?
3.6.
Okay. So you need a setback variance from 6.6 to, you need a non, you need to exaggerate a non-conformity for floor area ratio and for, for side setback. And are there any other? No, it's just here, it looks like there's dialogue on what can happen to the relief.
Yeah, I think it's either a variance or a special permit.
Okay, any ques, any questions from the board?
None.
Anybody here that's? Anybody here that's, anybody here that wants to speak on this matter in any manner? In favor, against? Just curious? Okay. Can you?
I'm still trying to, I'm still trying to
Okay.
look at this here and understand it a little bit more to see where exactly the setback is and where the deck is going. I see where, I think, where the four-by-four, what is that, paralel posts?
Do you have the site plan? That's probably the easiest way to see it.
Oh.
The graph paper?
Yeah, that is easier, and I didn't have that.
No, the actual site plan.
Okay, so, just my comment from looking at this. It's a nine-by-nine deck.
12th Street. So this is close to Dummy Bridge.
Is there a deck there? There's no deck there now.
I'm not sure.
You're not from the area, so.
I'm from Carver, but.
Yeah, you don't know the Dummy Bridge.
No, I don't know where Dummy Bridge is.
Okay. So I might as well say Kalamazoo. Okay, so you're on Main Avenue. If you come in from Cranberry Highway, down where, down where the new fire station is, and the lights, and you're heading towards Onset, there's a bridge that you go, got to go over to get to Onset.
Okay.
All the locals call that Dummy Bridge.
All right. Good to know.
Because way back in the day, before you were even born, at that traffic light, there was a restaurant called The White Rabbit. And the train used to come up from Connecticut and New York and stop there. And they had a train that went from The White Rabbit, To Onset Center, back and forth, back and forth. It's called a dummy train. So the bridge that the dummy car went over became Dummy Bridge.
Makes sense.
Well, thank you for that history lesson.
You didn't need to know that, did you?
No, but I know it now.
You know it now? Okay. Well, I figured everybody else took a lot of time. We don't want to rush you through.
No, no.
You've waited.
I waited a long time for this.
You waited. So are you down near the center of town, or are you down near the old White Rabbit? Or should I say the new fire station?
I'd say closer to the fire station.
Close, the new fire station, way down near Cranberry?
Closer to that.
You're closer to that, 12th Street.
70 Main Ave is where.
70 Main Ave. Well, I saw something about 12th Street here.
I think that's the intersecting street, 12th Street.
Okay. So you're down near the railroad tracks?
Ah, close to them, yeah.
Closer to the railroad track than to the bridge?
Yeah.
Okay, it's kind of dense in there, isn't it?
It is, it is.
Okay.
Small lots. I think her lot's 3,000 square feet or something like that.
Yeah. 3,000 square foot lot. The whole lot is only 3,000 square feet.
Yeah, yeah. So the houses are all really tight in there. And I believe the addition is a floor area, it's going over the floor area ratio, and the deck is a setback problem. But the house is already non-conforming, so.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at your, I'm looking at your, you know, your site plan here, and you've graded out the existing, and you've got in black, heavy black letters, the proposed nine-by-nine deck. You've got the proposed 16-by-4-foot addition for the stairs, I assume.
Yep.
Okay. And that's going to be indoor stairs so they can go up?
The interior staircase to the second floor.
Yeah, 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 I get it. And probably when it was originally built, there was a stairwell on the back of the house, no roof over it, nothing probably.
Maybe.
Yeah. Anyway, so.
One, one point I'd like to make, it's not 12th Street, it's 20th Street.
Well, there you go. Now I know where it, now it makes more sense. 12th Street is down near the Dummy Bridge. Now who's a dummy?
By The White Rabbit.
All I had to do was read the thing right. Thanks, thank you.
Mr. Simple, or Chris, whatever, it'll do.
Troy? Who'd I call you?
You called me everything but Veronica so far, so I'm waiting for Veronica.
You get them hormones going. We don't have any of those trans conversations. Okay. 20th Street, that helps me a lot.
20th Street, yeah. I misread it too. You said 12th. I saw 12th after you said it.
Well, I was, I was trying to look and, look at you when I talked to you, and look at it at the same time, so. Three different prescriptions in these glasses. If I look far, you know. Anyway, anybody on the board, any more serious questions?
I just want to understand too, the stairs are not increasing any setbacks, or they are?
No, it's an interior staircase to the second floor.
They're not?
Yep, but I'm saying like the setback, is the, is the variance, so the?
No, because that's the rear.
From what I see, no. The stairs don't, the stairs don't need any, because they got the side, they got 12 feet from the side, and they got 12 feet from the rear.
Okay, and the, and the required is 10 feet?
10.9 feet to the bow window.
10 feet.
The bow window and the stairwell?
It's going to be in the addition, in the addition part. So we're going to extend the staircase, and if we do that now, that puts the end of the staircase at the exterior wall.
Okay.
So that's the point of the addition, is to make room for that new staircase.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I know the neighborhood. There's no neighbors here saying, and you mailed them out. We got green cards.
Yep.
We got all this, yeah, certified mail receipts. Everybody knows that you want to do it. Nobody's screaming, "No."
Nope.
You're going to be looking in my bathroom window. I have a bedroom over there, and the window.
I'd like to make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Pardon me?
I'd like to make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Seconded by Troy. All in favor, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Richard?
Aye.
I almost said Veronica. Chris?
Aye.
It passes. There's no more talking. You can't say anything else. You're done. Now we need a motion to do something.
So I'll make a motion that under 1352 of our bylaws, I find this non-dentrimental to the neighborhood, and that we can give this a special permit.
Who's more familiar with when you can, does the, does the side setback require a variance? I think it might. I don't think we can do a vari.
Well, he's already non-conforming on the side.
Yeah, but this, can we do it as a special, but it has to be a variance.
No. If you're increasing the nonconformity, it's already existing nonconformity, so it's not a variance, it's a special permit.
Under 1352, yeah.
So we're going to do it as a special permit?
That's what would be my motion, yes. That we find it not detrimental, and we can treat this as a special permit.
So your just, your motion is simply to treat it as a special permit?
Yes.
You haven't made a motion to a grant yet?
Correct.
Does everybody understand the motion?
I do.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, Mr. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Debonese?
Abstain.
Abstain. Myself, aye. Simple?
Aye.
Conti?
Aye.
Okay. So it's going to be a special permit. You've already opened your mouth enough times, you got, you're on a roll. Why don't you do the next one?
So I'd like to make a motion, we approve special permit from Article 628 FAR relief, and also for the side setback.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Larson. All in favor, Mr. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Debonese?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Mr. Simple?
Aye.
Mr. Conti?
Aye.
It passes. 4, 1, 0.
4, 0?
Is it 4, 0, 1?
4, 1, 0. She said nay, so it's 4, 1, 0. So the first one she abstained? Yep. Okay.
First one she abstained. So one's a 4, 1, 0, and one's a 4, 0, 1.
Yep.
We're done.
All right. Thank you very much.
I'll be nice to you. I won't tell you you have to leave.
I'll leave anyways.
But we're, we're going to.
Yeah, I was going to say, it doesn't seem as thick as mine.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Was it a 1, 4, 1, 0? No, we need a motion to adjourn.
Is that gentleman in the audience here to see the board?
Do you want to be heard? I'm very sorry. What were you here for? Come on up, I can't hear you. A little better to hear you with.
Yeah, 2 East, I see it right here. Call me in the morning.
What is it?
2 East Boulevard.
Yeah, it looks like April 23rd. I was wondering about that too.
It didn't show.
Yeah, they pushed it way out because they weren't going to be able to get everything back into us in time. Sonya?
It wasn't on the agenda.
You know what, wasn't there?
It was supposed to be here today, but they pushed it out to, what, April 26?
Yeah.
23rd?
23rd.
Yeah, they continued it for April 23rd.
Did we have?
No, they were around for 3, 2, 6. They weren't here today.
Okay.
No, but it says hearings, March 12, 2025, on the agenda.
I thought they were supposed to be here also.
Not on the agenda, but on the list of the hearings.
What are we talking about, 2 East Boulevard?
Yeah. We continue that to tonight.
Yeah, and then they, they sent an email continuing it for April 23rd.
So I would think we would need to vote on that continuance, wouldn't we?
Yeah, they sent an email, but we can vote on it because of the email.
So I see a hearings, February 12, March 12, and April 23.
Yeah, today being the 12th.
So did they, were they?
But didn't they request that at the last hearing, I thought, to continue it for April 12?